Good evening, it's approximately 6:32. Welcome to the Thursday, April 14th, 2011, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Before we begin, I'd like to remind all the petitioners and members of the public here for the meetings tonight that there are agendas and staff packets out in the lobby. If you did not get one on your way in, it might be helpful to go do that now. We call the roll, please.
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars.
Here.
Jeff Braun.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Present.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Here.
Dale Patrick.
Here.
Thank you. Full board tonight, nice to see. Seven of nine members, of course, but that does make a quorum. Agenda item B, minutes. I don't believe we have any minutes for approval. Moving on to agenda item C, special order business executives sessions. Does anyone have any disclosures to make this evening? Mr. Cars?
Yes, I have two disclosures regarding case 2011-038. AWW is a client of my company's. I have current contracts with them. However, I have no involvement with this particular case or project, and I feel I can hear this case. My relationship would not affect my impartiality in hearing this case. And regarding 2011-039, I am acquainted with the petitioners in that case, however, I'm not familiar with their, this property, if not, don't feel my acquaintanceship would have any effect on my impartiality in hearing that case as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cars. Would the board like to discuss Mr. Cars' disclosure? Okay. Seeing no discussion, does anyone else have any disclosures to make? Mr. Vig?
I too have, want to disclose a relationship that my company has with AWW and some ongoing work, not on this project. And as Mr. Cars put it, my involvement in this case would not be affected by any of those projects that we have ongoing, and I feel I can be impartial in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Any discussion necessary on Mr. Vig's disclosure? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you, thank you both, based on your statements. We'll enjoy your participation in both of those cases. Any other disclosures? Going once, going twice? Okay. Moving on, agenda item D, consent agenda. We have three resolutions for approval. Resolution number 2011-005, 2011-006, and 2011-007. Have all the board members had a chance to review those resolutions for approval? Okay? I'll ask for a positive motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Vig, I see that you've moved and Ms. Denny has seconded. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda or discuss any of the resolutions for approval? Is there any objection to passing the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, the consent agenda passes. Seven yea votes and zero nay votes. All right, moving on. I see we have no appearance requests and no unfinished business or public hearings that are unfinished. No items on the regular agenda. That takes us to public hearings, agenda item H. Before we begin with public hearings, I would like to read the order of business. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the -- Am I correct? Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're good. Excuse me, minor pause, it's my first time in the chair. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, also not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, the staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, three minutes each. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. Staff shall reduce oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. All right. Case number 2011-038, the petitioner is, AWU is the petitioner or their representative present tonight. They've indicated yes, they are here. Whose case is this? Mr. Whitfield, could you please provide sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case has been advertised on municipal website. Additionally, 78 public hearing notices were sent on March 22nd. To date, three comments have been received in favor of the variances, two of which were laid on the table tonight before you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case is requested for variances from Anchorage Municipal Code 2109080F2C to allow two proposed buildings that do not appear to be an arrangement of smaller-sized connected structures, and from 2109080F2D to allow two proposed buildings that do not comply with the required four-foot alteration of a wall longer than 40 feet, and for exceeding the 120-foot maximum length of any building. This property is legally described as U.S. Survey 3042, Lot 71. It is generally located at the east end of Ruane Road in Girdwood, and is split-zoned GIP, GOS, and GI1. The property is currently developed with the existing Girdwood wastewater treatment facility that was constructed in 1978. In an effort to better serve the community, AWU is planning to upgrade the facility. During the application process for a conditional use permit, the need for these two variances became apparent. An as-built and plot plan of the facility can be found on pages 21 and 22 for your reference. The initial facility upgrade will include three buildings, all of which comply with Title 21. The subsequent upgrade will include two buildings, the residuals and treatment buildings. These two buildings will require a long rectangular design to maximize efficiency. This design does not comply with Anchorage Municipal Code 2109080. With that said, I'd like to address the seven standards separately. Standard number one, staff finds that this standard to be partially met. While there exists no extraordinarily physical circumstance, there does, however, exist an extraordinary design circumstance. The length and width of the two buildings have been reduced to their greatest extent. AWU has evaluated a number of feasible wastewater treatment technologies, with the selected technology providing the smallest footprint. Additionally, compliance with Anchorage Municipal Code 2109080 would result in an improper and inefficient arrangement of equipment. Standard number two, staff finds this standard to be partially met. As in standard number one, there are no extraordinary physical circumstances of the land. Compliance with Anchorage Municipal Code would result in an improper arrangement of equipment. Standard number three, staff finds this to be partially met. There is nothing unique about this lot that distinguishes it from other lots in the area. However, the need for these variances is not the result of the actions of the petitioner. The upgrade of the facility went through a rigorous selection process, with the selected technology found to best suit the needs of the Girdwood community. The system requires a linear configuration to properly process the incoming waste. Standard number four, staff finds this standard to be substantially met. The proposed size and rectangular layout of the treatment and residuals buildings is comparable to other treatment facilities that currently serve in this body of Anchorage. The violation will be in no way injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to public welfare. There is no drainage, runoff, noise, or other similar issues which might affect the residential properties in the area. Standard number five, staff finds this standard to be substantially met. The requested variances are dimensional and not use variances. Granted, the variances will not change the character of the zoning district, nor will it permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the district. Standard number six, staff finds this standard to be substantially met. Granted, this variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the public. Standard number seven, staff finds this standard to be substantially met. These requests are the minimum variances that would make possible a reasonable use of the land. The technology selected by AWU provides the smallest footprint of all technologies evaluated. As standards one, two, and three are not substantially met, the department must recommend to deny all these variances. If the board establishes findings that each of the standards are met, the department recommends approval be subject to the condition found on page nine of your staff packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Do any board members have questions of staff? Mr. Cars?
Yes, Mr. Whitfield. Are the two codes, the variances, are those 2109080F2C and F2D, are those related to what is known as the big box store variances?
No, Girdwood has their own set of regulations, and, you know, they have a unique style of code, and these are design standards specific to institutional uses within Girdwood.
Okay. The next --
They're similar to like a big box design, but they're specific to Girdwood.
Okay. And then there's a statement in the staff write-up regarding the site description. Property is level and typical in size and shape to other lots in the area. We're talking about 170-acre?
Yeah, the lots to the, well, to the north and to, well, there are other residential properties, but there are other properties that are zoned, GOS, GI1, and GIP, that are similar in size. It'd be to the east.
Okay, but immediately to the west, there's, the lots are much smaller than the 170 acres we're talking about here?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have clarified that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none? Will the petitioner please come forward? If you would, please, when you make it up to the mic, state your name and spell your last name, please, for the record.
Sure. My name is Peter Maus. Last name is spelled M-A-U-S.
Thank you, Mr. Maus. And who do you represent, Mr. Maus?
I represent Umeac, who is, with AWU is our client.
Thank you, Mr. Maus, and I believe in our staff packet we did have a notice of authorization for your representation.
And we have, our team presentation is divided into three parts. The first part will be presented by Chris Beck, B-E-C-K, with Agnew Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Hopefully, understand 10 minutes in total for your presentation.
Yeah, it is.
Before you begin, I ask that you speak to the seven standards that we heard the staff talk about.
Okay. The primary focus of my brief introduction will really be on the latter four of the standards, having to do with the fit of the project within its context. And lacking really long arms, I'll direct your attention to the map, which is on the right-hand side from your perspective of this first exhibit. And the main point it is making is to show the Girdwood area plan, which was the basis for the zoning. I think I'm gonna, I'll reach across and tell me if I can still be heard. This is the area where the project is proposed. Okay, then I'll just do it like this.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Certainly. So, I'm guessing many of you are familiar, but I think explaining the site and its location is a helpful way to think about the project. I'll do so briefly. As you drive in on Alieska Road, you can turn off in Ruane, and there's an isolated parcel that the Girdwood area plan set aside for industrial uses some time ago. The zoning reflects that. This happens to be a parcel that's owned by the municipality, so it received a different zoning, a category that relates to its public ownership. But the intent for the use of this area is for industrial uses. And as a result, we began to work on this project a couple of years ago, took it to the community. The community very much recognizes the need for this project because it's a situation where you have an outdated plant, it's over 30 years old, and it is not meeting the flow demands that come through the area. So there's a recognized need for this. The community, both the Land Use Committee and the Board of Supervisors, passed resolutions in support of this, and they, I believe, it's fair to say, in their behalf, that they felt that it was a good fit with the industrial uses of this site. There aren't residential uses nearby. It's a large area that this community has set aside for these kinds of functions. So that's my brief introduction, and then Steve is gonna talk for a second about some of the functional characteristics of the building.
Good evening. My name is Steve Hyland, H-Y-L-A-N-D, with MWH, serving as the Design Manager for the Girdwood Wastewater Treatment Facility Upgrade. This drawing may be a little bit difficult to see, but what I'd like to touch on is the two proposed buildings that we've identified as a residuals building and a treatment building. They are there to function, to treat the wastewater coming into the plant. The residuals building will pretreat the wastewater. It's intended to screen the wastewater and remove debris, inert debris, that might cause problems downstream. It will also remove grit. These can be sands or inert particles that, again, can damage downstream equipment. And then the pretreated wastewater will be delivered to the treatment building. But in the residuals building, it also has a function where the sludge that's produced from the liquid treatment is returned back to that facility, where it'll be thickened, stored, and then hauled to the aspirin plant for ultimate disposal. So the drawing I have here is that of the treatment building that we wanted to show as an example of the liquid treatment. The water is delivered to what we call eration basins, followed by submerged membrane basins, and then it goes into channels for UV disinfection, and then the treated effluent is discharged to Glacier Creek. The main thing we'd like to show with this particular drawing is how compact everything is, how busy everything is. We have a number of basins that are water-bearing structures, and we have other areas that are galleries. And there's a combination of piping, valves, diffusers, blowers, pumps, there's just a myriad amount of equipment that goes in there. We use common wall construction to make this as compact as possible, and I think you can appreciate that the economies that we benefit from, or we benefit from having this common wall construction. Another feature, by the way, I should explain, the upper view is a plan view, and the lower view is a section view. And again, in red, you can see depiction of various equipment, piping, and like that. Another feature for this facility is a bridge crane. The bridge crane would run across here, and it would span the full building width. And the bridge crane is essential so that we can access equipment for inspection, for preventative maintenance, for repair, and sometimes for replacement. And if you think about how a bridge crane functions, it really needs to work within a rectangular footprint. So that's a brief summary of the function of these buildings and why they're in a rectangular pattern.
Thank you. How much time do I have left?
About four and a half minutes, Mr. Maus.
We're on schedule. We're asking for this variance because of a mechanical and equipment process reasons, but within those, within those issues of the project, we want to make it, make a statement that it's important to us, even despite the difficulties that we're having just from an engineered system process with the project, we've gone through extra measures to make sure that this project does fit within the confines of the Girdwood image and the Alpine image, dark colors, create shadows on the buildings in the valleys from the mountain views, so that we can provide a facility and a complex of buildings that's broken up and provides a myriad of roof forms still, that really gives the, gives the whole complex what I would call a non-industrial image. As you can see by our composite from an aerial, which is basically, the large photo on the upper left shows the view from the mountain. The actual project is located right here. And even at a much larger scale, it's very difficult to see. When you zoom in on it, it's basically this view right here, and the two larger structures are these two right here, with the treatment building and the residual in the back. We've really tried to capture the Alpine feel of the Girdwood community. This, our end here shows the treatment building plan, and two views of the project. And then the following image on this backside shows the residual building, and its intended image on the exterior with stone on the base, and then panels to, and then large overhangs to provide shadows for mountain views, and just as people are in the area, to provide a way of scaling down and making the buildings less visible in the community. And so we've really, we've really tried to comply to the extent of the zoning regulations as much as possible. But we're here in front of you today because the process flow, as you saw on the sketch earlier with Mr. Hyland, all of those, all of those systems are linked very closely and very compactly together. But even with that process and the design philosophy of doing that, there's just no way to meet the 120-foot limit. So, that's all we have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Maus. If you could hold on for just a minute. Are there any questions by the board? Mr. Vig?
Thank you. Mr. Maus, on, at least on the vicinity map I'm looking at, on a plot plan of the proposed project, it looks like the parcel is very close, if not immediately adjacent, to Glacier Creek. Is that accurate, or?
It's reasonably close to Glacier Creek, yes.
Okay. There's another tract in between this parcel and the creek itself?
It's, it, like, it was mentioned by staff earlier, this is a parcel of land that actually has three zoning districts on it. And so, the, one of the three is to the east of the site, between this zoned area and the creek.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any other questions of the petitioner? Does staff have any questions? Okay, none? With that, we'll open it up for public testimony. Okay, Ms. Maus? Anyone from the public wishing to testify? No? Okay. Seeing no one. Staff have any rebuttal for the -- Okay. Petitioner, petitioner have any rebuttal for the public testimony?
No, I do not.
Thank you, Mr. Maus. With that, the matter rests with the board. I'll ask for a positive motion, please. Mr. Cars? Have you made a motion?
Yeah, I haven't done this in a while, so give it a shot.
Let's hear it.
Respect to case 2011-038, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2109080F2C to allow two proposed buildings that do not appear to be an arrangement of smaller-sized connected structures, and from 2109080F2D to allow two proposed buildings that do not comply with the required four-foot alteration of a wall longer than 40 feet, and for exceeding the 120-foot maximum length of any building side, subject to condition number one found on page nine of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Mr. Vig, you've seconded the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Cars, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I intend to support the motion. As staff had indicated, these two code citations are for 2109080 Building Design Standards are specific to the Girdwood Valley, to preserve the, retain the visual beauty and character of Girdwood Valley's natural landscape, summarizing from that citation. And a couple of the items that were handed to us this evening are from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors, resolution of, unanimous resolution of support, and from the Girdwood Trails Committee as well, indicating their support of the motion. So, speaking specifically to the seven standards, I concur with staff's findings, with the exception that I feel that all the standards are substantially met, and I'll speak to those specifically. Standard one, and, Mr. Vig, not looking to steal any of your thunder, if I know where you're going with one of your questions, but there is the creek adjacent to the property, as well as the size and acreage of this property or two, physical circumstances that lend itself to, lend me to believe that the standard is met, in addition to staff's discussion of the facility with the items A, B, and C listed on page six. Regarding standard number two, strict application of the code would create an exceptional or undue hardship. I do find that that standard is met. The, as staff had indicated, the design cannot be modified to comply with the standards of this without adversely affecting the efficiency and effectiveness of the treatment process as provided by the applicant. Standard three, hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. I find this standard is met, again, with the size of the parcel, the allowance for this type of facility on this parcel, and, again, as described by the applicant, the process flow equipment went through a rigorous selection process, found to best suit the needs of the Girdwood community. So I find that standard is met. Concur with standard number, or staff, that standard four is substantially met, as well as five, six, and seven, for the reasons cited by staff. So for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Mr. Vig, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. I also intend to support the motion, and I do believe that both the size and the proximity of this lot adjacent to the -- size and the proximity of this lot adjacent to the creek create a somewhat of a special circumstance in the physical condition of the lot, making it comply with the intent of the code that Mr. Cars read with regard to the fitting in with the atmosphere and architectural theme of the Girdwood area, the look of it. And so I don't believe that... I believe that that is something that needs to be considered. I believe that that rises to a substantial meeting of standard one. And standard number two, I agree as well, that the strict application of the code would create undue hardship for the ability to develop the treatment processes on this industrial nature lot. With regard to standard three, I agree that that is not a self-imposed situation. It's a fact of just the necessary requirements for treating the wastewater that applicant described earlier, requiring a size that needs some consideration. With regard to standard four, I would like to hear some other board members' thoughts on that. I do agree with staff's findings that it's at least partially met, that the variance granted will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. I did notice in the packet a comment on page 36, specifically identifying a need in the future, prior to issuing of a building permit, that a drainage analysis and review would need to be done to make sure that there are no impacts. And I guess I'd like to hear other board members' thoughts about possibly adding that as a second condition to the recommendation should this pass. But I believe it's at least substantially, if not, or at least partially, if not substantially, met with standard number four. And five, six, and seven, I agree that it doesn't change the intent of the character of the zoning district. The variance would not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality, and that it's a minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land, and that's based on the applicant's demonstration of the compactness of the buildings. So for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. With that, I'll open it up for board discussion. Ms. Denny.
Yes, I also intend to support the motion, and I'd like to make a comment about the exterior design of the building and commend the designers for, at least in part, trying to conform to the standards of the variegated roof lines, if not along the walls. At least they did make an effort to not make it look like a box.
I agree it is a very attractive wastewater treatment plant. Any other board member comments? Mr. Vig, I sensed a perhaps potential friendly amendment requested in your discussion and would agree to that effect, but I don't think I'm the person to craft the language necessary. Anyone else like to take a stab at that? Mr. Cars?
I would, I guess my comment with respect to that is, I believe that that's something that would go with the building permit application at that time for what they'd written. So I don't feel the need to have that condition placed on there. I believe that the applicant has read that and should be aware of it. But if and when this moves forward, they'll have to get a building permit, and that's part of the review process. Though, I would lean towards not putting that in there.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cars. Any other discussion on the motion for us? Okay. With All right, that motion passes with a vote of seven yea votes and zero nay votes. I must, for the record, read a grievance statement. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. All right, moving on to case number two, 2011-039. Are the petitioners Corey and Alicia Klingenmeyer present? Indication that the petitioner is here. Thank you. Staff, please provide sufficiency of notice.
On March 22nd, 107 public hearing notices were mailed. As of the writing of this case, no comments were received from the Old Seward Ocean View Community Council. One late comment was laid on the table before you, was received in support of the variance. This is a public comment in support of the variance.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Would you please proceed with your presentation?
This is a request to allow a maximum lot coverage of approximately 35.1%. The petition site is an 11,263-square-foot lot with a two-story, single-family house and attached garage. The lot is 2,763 square feet greater than the minimum lot size of 8,500 square feet in the R1A District. The petitioner would like to build an airplane hangar as an attached accessory structure in the rear of the house. The residential lot is adjacent to Flying Crown airstrip. Pages two and three show the proposed and existing site, so the as-built for the property now and what they propose to do. Standard one is not met. This requested variance does not arise from the physical conditions of the land itself, such as creeks, wetlands, steep slopes, et cetera. Standard number two is not met. Strict application of the R1A District regulations would not deprive the petitioner of rights commonly enjoyed by properties in the same zoning district. This lot is flat and is not affected by other natural features such as streams and wetlands. Additionally, this lot is roughly the same size or larger than many other lots in the same neighborhood. However, the petitioner has provided an aerial photo showing the location of three other lots with airplane hangars in the same neighborhood. Also, the owner points out that the nearby hangar, that the nearby R2A zoning district allows 35% lot coverage, whereas the R1A District in which the petition site is located only allows 30% lot coverage. The property just one lot away from the petition site is a building with an airplane hangar in the R2A District. That's how nearby the R2A District is. Also, page 33 of the packet shows the petitioner has identified three existing properties that have existing airplane hangars. Standard number three is not met. There are no physical circumstances, physical conditions of the lot arising from slope, streams, wetlands, or other physical impediments to development that directly relate to the need for this variance. The need for the variance is a result of the desire of the applicant to have an airplane hangar. The request for the variance is self-imposed. Standard number four is met. There are no objections from the neighborhood, and there's one letter in support. Standard five is met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a use variance. Standard six is met. There are no identified health or safety issues. Standard seven is partially met. A reasonable use already exists legally with the house and garage. If the proposed airplane hangar is the minimum size needed to build such a structure, then it may be considered a minimum variance request. The department finds that standards one, two, three, and seven are not substantially met, and therefore recommends denial of the variance. If after a public hearing, board finds all seven standards have been substantially met, the approval should be subject to the following conditions. That's one through three on page seven. And the third, the first two are just standard conditions, recording notice zoning action, and that it's according to the site plan that they've proposed. Condition number three, resolve fire safety issues with fire plan review. That condition doesn't really need to be there. It's just the petitioner would need to speak with fire and get their sign off on that condition. They would need to do that anyway with the building permit. Just to err to the side of caution, we put that condition there because fire did comment that with a structure of this size, abutting a house, attached to a house, it needed a certain firewall, and there's certain, there's certain building specifications that need to be done with a building of this size, hence the condition of approval. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Does the board have any questions of staff? Mr. Vig.
Thank you. Just for the record, as I reviewed it, Mr. McLaughlin, it looks, it appears as though the proposed structure, according to the plot plan on page two, would meet the setback requirements, as you noted on page four of the packet. And we're not going to be having a variance request for setback encroachment two years from now or anything like that.
Through the chair, Mr. Vig, that's correct.
Mr. Cars?
Yes, through the chair, the, there's a 30-foot CEA easement that's indicated it's to be vacated on the plot plan on page two. Is that, is there a plating action that will vacate that easement, are you aware, Mr. McLaughlin? And if not, that's probably a question that I can raise with the applicant as well.
Yeah. Staff didn't address that. I'd leave it to the petitioner's representative. He's a skilled surveyor in dealing with these. He may be removing it by document, if it was put on by document. Usually easements are not a real big deal. It's, so an easement is an encumbrance on a property for a public purpose, and the utility that's using that easement can remove if they provide a letter stating that they have no objection or they're willing to abandon the easement. So there are processes for handling that.
Mr. Cars, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions by the board of staff? Seeing none, I would, the petitioner, please come forward, state your name, spell your last name, please, for the record.
My name is Kenneth Lang, L-A-N-G, and I'm here this evening in behalf of the petitioners, Alicia and Corey Klingenmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. You will have 10 minutes for your presentation, and again, I remind you to please speak to the seven standards.
Yes. Although the staff has recommended denial of the variance, we believe the application has merit and should be approved by the board, and I would like to address the seven standards. Lots, regarding standard number one, the lot is exceptional in that it has frontage on the airstrip. In all of the Anchorage Bowl, there are only 22 lots with direct access to airstrips, and they're all located in this subdivision. We'd further argue the original subdivision plat was, which has over 250 lots, is flawed because it didn't make any special distinction between regular subdivision lots and these airstrip lots. The last phase of the subdivision, the zoning was changed to R2A, and although the homes in that phase were constructed with, as single-family homes, the allowable lot coverage is 40%, which Mr. McLaughlin said it was 35, but it's, my understanding is 40 in an R2A. If that had extended to the remaining lots fronting on the airstrip, we would only need, we would not need this variance. There are three airstrip lots in the R2A zone, and it's shown on page eight of your packet. Regarding standard number two, because the lots front on the airstrip, the lot fronts on the airstrip, it is unique in its own right. The existing home was constructed in 1983 and presently has an assessed value of over $400,000. The purchasers, petitioners purchased the property in 2003 and will be removing a large deck and storage shed to accommodate the addition. It's not possible or practical to remove more of the existing structure, and the proposed addition will add approximately $150,000 to the value of the home. Regarding standard number three, the petitioners are enduring a hardship to some extent by not having a hangar to house their airplane. They originally purchased the lot because it had, they had a plane, and this was a place where they could keep it close to home and have access to the airstrip. In fact, there have been problems due to vandalism, weather, primarily wind and snow, and moose. The moose have damaged parked airplanes for no apparent reason. Klingemiers need the hangar to get their airplane undercover. Regarding standards four, five, and six, the staff found the standards for the variance is met. Regarding number seven, as to whether this is the minimum variance possible, the petitioner is proposing to construct a hangar which is 43 feet wide and 40 feet deep. It will have a door which is 40 feet wide, which just accommodates a Cessna with a wingspan of 36 feet. The depth of the addition will house the plane's length of 28 feet, with room for a small shop and storage for the items presently in the storage shed. With regard to Mr. Cars' question on the easement, there are two types of easements, platted easements and easements which are created by document. There is a 10-foot utility easement along the rear property lines which was created by the plat. That will remain. The 30-foot Chugatch electric easement was created by a document, and it can go away by document. The, we've spoken with Chugatch. They have no facilities within the easement and are prepared to vacate it. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and would reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Lang? Ms. Denny?
Yes, Mr. Lang, you stated that the depth of the aircraft or the length of the aircraft is 28 feet. Was any consideration given to making the depth of the hangar just a hair smaller?
Well, you need room to walk around it when it's inside. That would still just leave six feet, front and back.
Well, if I'm correct, the tail of the aircraft doesn't exceed 36 feet, and it seems like there's plenty of room on either side of the aircraft to put other accoutrements and tools and equipment, and still have room for the aircraft.
You may be correct. I wasn't involved in the actual design of the structure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. I have a follow-up question, actually. The proposed size is a concern for me as well. Mr. Lang, do you know at all if the petitioners would consider alternate design of the hangar?
To some extent. To some extent, they, they probably would, but they, they're, they weren't able to attend this evening, they're out of state right now, I, I can't answer.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Any other questions of Mr. Lang? Mr. McLaughlin, I saw you turn to your code book, did you find an answer to the R2A lot coverage?
Yeah, I apologize for the, for the mistake, Mr. Lang's correct that the R2A allows 40% lot coverage.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, do you have any other questions of, of the petitioner?
No, I don't.
Ms. Williams.
Yes, I'm a little unclear on the, let's see, the properties that you identified on this large Google map, the Breakwater property, the Lighthouse Court property, and then the Nora property, which you indicate all have hangars attached to the home. Are these all zoned R2A or are these also R1A or is it a mix?
They are all R1A.
They are all one, R1A?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, I have another follow-up question, is it known whether or not those hangars within the R1A district meet the lot coverage requirement of 30% or smaller?
No, I, I don't have evidence one way or another.
Any other questions of the petitioner? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Lang, we'll open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Please come forward. State your name, please spell your last name for the record.
My name is Charles Fryer, F-R-Y-E-R.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer, you'll have three minutes and I'll ask you as well to speak to the standards before us.
Thank you. This is my first time on a zoning in variance, so if you'll forgive me and my protocols, I'm the next-door neighbor for the Klingemiers. The hangar just, or the property just to the north of the Klingemiers is a R1A according to this. He has a hangar and I'm sure he exceeds the variance that we're here for. There are also three other properties with hangars, two of which, or one of which is in South Association. There's two associations here, the North Association, of which I am secretary treasurer, and then there's the South Association, and several of the properties in the South Association exceed this variance also, one of which has a hangar and it is pictured on the, on the exhibit. Now getting back to the requirements, I guess they are one through seven. The physical circumstances, there are no streams, wetlands, or slopes, however, we do have severe winds, case in point, last Thursday. We had 50 mile an hour winds going down that airstrip. We've had excessive 50 mile an hour winds where we've actually parked a 10-wheel dump truck in front of some of the airplanes to stop them from being damaged. Mr. Klingemeyer wants to use his airplane all year. Without the hangar, in the wintertime with your winter storms here, it's almost impossible for that airplane to be used in the wintertime. He bought that house on the basis of being able to have full access to his airplane and to be able to use it. In the winter months right now, it's pretty tough for that airplane to operate out of that airstrip. That would also cover the number two, physical circumstances. Number three, the hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions do not result. Once again, most of the conditions that require this hangar are natural, not his doing. There's no problem with the neighbors, the one to the north has a hangar, I'm to the south, I'm considering a hangar, and the one next to me, the president of the association is behind me, he will testify also, he has a hangar. We bought these properties so that we could be near our airplanes, that we could enjoy them, and we'd like to enjoy them 12 months out of the year. That hangar design, the way it's set up, is extremely compatible with our desires with the homeowners association. Number seven is not entirely true because the petitioner can only use part of his rights, his flying rights during the summertime without this hangar. With the hangar, you can take care of it in wintertime, attach skis, and make full use of the airstrip. I think that's basically all I have to say and I'll be open to questions. I'm past president of the association for five years and secretary treasurer now, and I have a good knowledge of the area and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fryer, I do have a question, are you testifying on behalf of yourself or the association?
Association.
Okay, then you mentioned the president is here as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we ask that the three minutes allotted to the association be yours then and the president speak on his own behalf. Any questions for Mr. Fryer? Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Fryer, does anybody in your neighborhood that you're aware have opposed this?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Vig.
Yes, there was a question a mi, a couple of minutes ago about what the appropriate depth of a hangar would be to, you know, house, house an aircraft inside and allow for some maintenance activities to go on and-
Yes, sir.
Could you, could you speak to what you would consider to be a reasonable or minimal amount of-
The normal hangar width, and I'm going to start with that one, is 40 feet, and this is a 40-foot door, so it's industry, industry standard. The length of the airplane is 28 feet, you're probably going to have two or three feet from the spinner to the door for clearance, safety, and then you'll probably have some kind of workbench storage behind the airplane with access. So let's say there's 28 feet on the airplane for length and then you've got three feet on the front, so there's 31 feet, you'd want six feet, five, six feet in the back, so you're right there at the 38 feet, sir.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
I, I do have a couple of quick, quick questions, Mr. Fryer. Are there tie-downs on what would be considered an apron area, either on lots or just off the runway?
There's nothing off the runway, sir, unless they're on a private lot. Now, there's problems with that because of association rules, but nothing that deals with this variance. The tie-downs are all in common property on the runway and as such, the planes are fully accessible to the critters that we have. In fact, mine was dinged last year. I opened the curtains to look out, it was a nice morning and here's a bull moose walking towards my airplane, and he dinged it in a couple, three places, but nothing serious, he was too worried about other things. And about that time, strangely enough, Princess came by with her train, because the train tracks are right there. I bet that has to be one of the most distributed photographs in, in the country. But anyway, and then the vandalism, we've, we try and keep an eye on the non-members because people will try and cross the runway and that creates all sorts of problems and they're not members. The other thing is the winds, winds are just, are tough there. That wind is coming down that turnigan arm and makes the turn and 50, 60 mile an hour winds are not uncommon. And like I said, we park dump trucks there to protect the airplanes. So what Mr. Klingemeyer wants to do is entirely consistent with the runway usage.
One final question, Mr. Fryer, trying to conceptualize the size of the airplane versus the size of the proposed hangar, given the size of the proposed hangar, is it conceivable to only fit this one airplane in it or is it large enough to fit additional airplanes? I mean, how big are we talking here in terms of-
You'd have to have a model airplane if you've got something else in there, RC or something. You won't be able to fit a normal passenger airplane in your person-type airplane.
Any other questions for Mr. Fryer? Does staff have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for your, ah, thank you, Joe. Mr. Vig, last second.
Thank you. Do you happen to know the width of the airstrip, the platted, right-of-way width of that airstrip?
It varies between 100 and roughly 25 feet and about 50 feet. It's got a dogleg in it the farther south you go and that dogleg is because the railroad tracks encroach on the subdivision. So the airstrip itself is only about 1,046 feet long, but the actual length, if you include the taxiway as it follows the airstrip, is close to 1,700.
The width is, it varies, but-
Oh, it's about 50 feet down there by Oceanview Drive.
And up here, the applicant's location is maybe a little wider than that or-
Up by Klingemiers and my house, it's about 125 feet.
And then east of that then is the right, is the railroad?
There's a tie-down there with, because that, the division between the North and the South Association is not, if this is the runway, you would think the division would be perpendicular, but it's not, it's a diagonal across there. And the area from the runway to the railroad tracks, there is a tie-down for the South area, for the South Association in there. It's about 30 feet, 30-foot strip between these, between the boundary of the runway and the fence, which is the right-of-way for the railroad.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fryer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Please come forward. State your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
My name is John Henry, H-E-N-R-Y.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, you have three minutes.
Okay, Mr. Fryer pretty much covered everything I have to say, I'm just here to support it, I'm the president of the homeowners association there and I think the hangar is an enhancement to that. It's also complimentary to the runway, if you've ever been around a runway. If you drive in that area, you don't even know these hangars exist if you drive the road structure in there. They're well blended into the houses and they're, they're just an enhancement and I don't see any issues with this whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, I, I did clarify earlier about the distinction between the testimony by the association and personal, can I clarify with you as well, are you testifying on behalf of yourself or, or the association?
Well, I'm kind of testifying as a concerned observer on this whole thing, I mean, I live on the airstrip also and, and one of my houses is, is, is in one of these pictures, so, and I think it's, I think it's good for the neighborhood and I think you, the designs are so well-integrated, you don't even know they're hangars, you wouldn't even know it driving around the neighborhood, you could, you wouldn't even know the difference.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Henry? Mr. Cars?
Mr. Henry, you live to the north of the petitions, on the north side?
I live just to the south, I'm two houses down from Corey and Alicia.
Just to the south, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And, and any other questions by the board, mister? Does staff have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. Anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Seeing none, does the petitioner have any rebuttal?
Yes, a couple of things. It has been pointed out, but I wanted to emphasize that the proposed addition will conform to the setback requirements for the zone, actually exceeds it. And it's not in your packet, apparently they didn't respond, but on March 31st, I did present the case to the Oceanview Community Council and they were in unanimous support. And finally, regarding the comments from the, the fire reviewer, the building designer, Bill Ivy, met with Cleo Hill and Tom Furch of the fire department and discussed it with them and, and resolved their concerns. Cleo is unfamiliar with a section of the code, the IFC code, which grants certain exemptions for residential hangars. Mr. Ivy feels the addition can be designed to meet all current IFC, IBC, and IRC building code requirements. In addition, he checked with AWU and the fire flow is more than adequate for the needs. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lang, for the record, the public testimony is, is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Any further questions by the board? With that, I'll ask for a, a positive motion from a board member. Ms. Wal, Williams, you've indicated that you've made a motion, is that correct? Please state, state your motion.
In case number 2011-039, I move with grant of variance from AMC 21400308 to permit a structure to exceed the maximum allowable lot coverage of 30% to 35, about 35%, subject to the conditions one through three on page seven of the staff packet.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and we're still waiting on a, a second. Ms. Denny, have you seconded the motion?
Yes, I've seconded the motion.
Thank you.
I also plan to support the variance.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Ms. Williams, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I'm struggling with this a little bit, mostly because of standards one and two, the, the subject property is similar to all the other properties around it, it, it looks like, from at least the maps that we have, the, the one difference being perhaps that it's zoned R1A versus R2A, which according to the staff notes, that there's one lot away is zoned R2A, which would alleviate any of the problems the petitioner is having. So I'm, I'm having problems with standards one and two and for the same reasons, standard three, two. On standard two as well, you know, I, I just, the, the, something I'm struggling with is that if we, we don't grant this variance, then they won't be able to build a hangar as obviously many other people in the neighborhood have been able to. For standard four, I do believe that that has been met. The, the use would be, building the hangar would be in line with, with other properties in the neighborhood. I believe standard five is also met because hangers may be built in this R1A district and also it is a, a dimensional, not a use variance. And for six, I believe, I agree with staff that that is met and on seven, I do, do believe that the variance would be the minimum possible, given the, the statements from, from both the applicant and from the public, that that is the standard size for, for a hangar for an airplane of this size and also that the applicant would be removing structures on the current property in order to, to fit the, the hangar. But all, all that said, I'm still struggling with whether to support this or not because I, I'm not sure on standards one, two, and three, whether they're met or not and I'm interested to hear what other board members have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Denny?
Yes, I, I find that standard one has been met for the, just judging from the safety factor and, and as mentioned by the petitioner and the public, the amount of wind that goes through that area being detrimental to the aircraft and some of the structures, so I'm, I'm looking at it as more of a safety standpoint and an aircraft hangar to the residents in this subdivision are typical to a garage for a normal house and most people would argue that having a garage on their property to house their, their car, to keep it out of the weather is, is pretty practical in, in that effect. So I, I'm, I'm looking at it as the standards are met, just on, on a safety, for safety and, and because of the weather and the neighborhood. That's pretty, pretty particular to that part of town, the high winds. And I also, I agree with staff on four or five- And I also, I agree with staff on 4, 5, and 6, and that on 7 has been demonstrated that that is probably the minimum size for a hangar for that, that type of aircraft, to get in, get in and out of the building safely and still be able to maintain it. So I, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Open, open it up for board discussion? Yes, Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also intend on supporting the motion. You know, the two exceptional circumstances I find, it's next to an airstrip...
Mr. Fink, could you?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It is next to an airstrip, and while the property is immediately adjacent to it, are as well, so that doesn't distinguish it, I guess it would depend on what other land... Well, it's other land in the same district, so I think it's fairly unique in where it's located, next to the airstrip. And the wind, well, maybe not a physical circumstance, certainly has manifestations that are physical and are considerable. So I, I think the, its proximity to the airstrip as well as the severe wind, for me, get me through 1 and 2, the standards. As far as 3, not self-imposed, I don't, I don't believe it is. Again, particularly with, with the wind element, to me, it's a safety issue, so I plan on supporting the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Any other board members wishing to comment? Mr. Fink?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Fink's comments and would also add that on the easterly border of the airstrip is the railroad corridor, which is, I don't remember the width of that right-of-way corridor through there, but it's substantial. And I recall whether there's an embankment there of any height, but my point is that property that might be visually impacted by this greater-than-code massing of a building is quite a ways away. And so I think that that should be a consideration. It's, it's a unique physical circumstance of this, of this lot, and, and some of the other ones right on this airstrip, and it's a very small number of lots, I think I heard 22 in the entire municipality of Anchorage. So I think it's a very unique situation that deserves some consideration for those reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. I initially had difficulty with this, this case as well, stemming from, in particular, standards 3 and 7. As I mentioned earlier, the, the size of the hangar was of concern to me and had questioned whether or not a conforming size would be possible. And trying to lay out in my own mind what the smallest hangar that could accommodate that Cessna is, it doesn't seem like even a tiny T-hanger would, would fall into the 30% threshold. Given the testimony that we've heard and the concern for visual aesthetics, both within the community and Anchorage at large, I'm, I'm willing to make concession that the proposal before us maintains a reasonable use of the land, given its location on the airstrip and, and need for, for a hangar. So I intend to support the motion.
Any other board member comments? Saying none, please vote. That motion passes with 7 yea votes and 0 nay votes. Let's read for the record. "Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's, we need a break. Okay, yes? Do I have to gavel out? Okay, let's take five minutes. Let's carry on. Our final case for the evening is case number 2011-040. Is the petitioner, Michael Paulsen, present? He's indicated that he is. Staff, please provide sufficiency of notice for the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On March 22nd, there were 62 public hearing notices mailed to the neighborhood. As of this writing, no responses from the, there was no response from the university-area community council. There's one late public comment laid on the table before you this evening in support of the variance, and a sign was posted on the home facing the street to announce the, this, this hearing and case tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, please proceed with your presentation.
The petitioner requests a variance from the R2A district regulations to allow a covered porch to encroach 2.3 feet, 11 point, 11 and 1/2 percent into the 20-foot front yard setback. The covered front porch was recently built without a building permit by a contractor hired by the owner to make energy improvements to the house. The encroachment was discovered by a zoning code enforcement officer. The owner and contractor that he hired thought that the building permit was not needed for an improvement costing less than $5,000. This is, but this is considered to be a structure, hence the need for the permit. So they were right about one thing, but wrong about another. Page 2 shows the as-built. Pages 30 through 33 show the before-and-after photos. They're very nice photos showing what the house looked like prior to the covered porch and then after it was constructed. Standard number 1 is not met. There do not appear, appear to be exceptional physical circumstances of the land. Standard number 2 does not appear to be met. There does not appear to be a physical circumstance of the land which would prevent the owner from having a covered front porch. However, covered front porches are a common right of enjoyment in the neighborhood, especially for winter time in Alaska. Staff counted several covered porches, front porches on this street. The house is located approximately 27 feet back from the front property line. The covered front porch is approximately 10 feet long, which accounts for the 2.3-foot encroachment. Page 9 shows an aerial photo of the property, and you can see the, the neighboring properties and how this one compares to the others in terms of their location with respect to the front, front lot line. Standard number 3 is not met. There's no peculiarity of the lot. This lot is essentially the same as others in the same zoning district. The need for the variance is a result of the petitioner's desire to keep his covered front, the existing covered front porch. Standard number 4 is met. Standard number 5 is met. Standard number 6 is met. The petitioner has provided letters from five neighbors in support of granting the variance. Those letters are found on page 29 of the packet. Standard number 7, the standard is substantially met. A covered porch is not needed for reasonable use of the land. However, covered front, this covered French, front porch is small. The requested variance is, I'm sorry, let me repeat that. Standard number 7 is substantially met. A covered porch is not needed for reasonable use of the land. However, the covered porch is, the requested variance is small, only 2.3 feet, 11 and 1/2 percent encroachment into the required 20-foot front yard setback. The setback encroachment appears to be minor. The, it, encroachment appears to be de minimis. Also, the built street is not built to the front property line. It's actually, there's a 60-foot right-of-way in, in front of the house, and the, the street, I'm not sure how wide it is, maybe 30 feet. And it's built probably on the center line within that 60-foot right-of-way. So that would mean that the street is approximately 20 feet from the, the front property line, and if the encroachment's only 2.3 feet, then the distance really is not very visual, visually obvious. The department finds that standards 1, 2, and 3 are not substantially met and recommends denial for the variance. If after the public hearing, the board finds that all seven standards have been substantially met, the approval should be subject to conditions 1 through 3 on page 7 of the packet. I would be happy to answer questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Do any board members have questions of staff? Mr. Fink?
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, you, you mentioned that you, because of the width of the right-of-way and distance from the street to the property line, that this is not a visually noticeable encroachment. And do you happen to have looked at properties, maybe three or four lots, north and south of, of the subject property, to get a sense of their, how these line up, so to speak?
To be honest with you, I, when I visited the site a while back, I, I really don't remember. I, I'd asked you to direct the question to the, the owner of the house. He could speak to, if, if his house is similarly set back from the, you know, is placed in the same spot on, on his lot as his neighbors.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Saying none? Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Would the petitioner please come forward? State your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
All right, good evening. My name is Michael Paulsen, P-A-U-L-S-E-N.
Good evening, Mr. Paulsen. You'll have 10 minutes for your presentation, and again, please speak to the seven standards.
Okay. I'll probably repeat a little bit of what he said, but I'm a novice at this, so bear with me. I'm Michael Paulsen. My wife and I have resided at 3312 Glendon for 28 years. It's the only home I've ever owned, and I've raised my family there. I've never sold a home. In the last couple of years, we noticed that some of our neighbors have performed upgrades in their homes, made the neighborhood a little better, and of course, helps with home values. We heard about the energy upgrade and incorporated that into our plan. We'd never had a contractor do any outside work, so it was a new experience for us. 2010, we contacted Merzendorf Construction to perform the upgrade. It was understood the energy upgrade did not require a permit and pressed forward. We replaced windows, added 2 inches insulation to the outside of the house, vinyl, new vinyl siding, had insulation blown in, and had some old stairs replaced in the, the rear of the house, and had some lesser tile work done inside the house. On the front porch, that's where we spend a lot of our time and enjoy the evenings and summer. We have a small outside little fireplace there, and so we decided to inquire before they did the outside work about putting a cover over that area. We added a layer of protection from rain, snow, and ice when we were in the porch, provided protection for inclement weather, weather as well as visitors that come to the door. The contractor indicated that since the cost was $1,900, it was, and it was under the threshold of the $5,000 limit not requiring a building permit. I understand now that there are other variables that dictate what actions require permits. In this case, his information was in error, and as we later found out from the building inspector, that this is considered a structure. Our error subsequently triggered this event. As the owner, I accept full responsibility for the problem, and I hereby request the variance be granted for oversight. This was not done intentionally, and through a process, I've learned a lot about right-of-ways, believe me. I'm going to address some of the standards, and again, bear with me. I do, to answer a couple of the questions that he had about the street and things, I do have a couple of pictures here.
Mr. Paulsen, I think we'll need to keep these for 30 days, is it? Thank you.
Okay, the house has easements on two sides. The zoning plat and building permits, from what I researched, were done back in 1970, '71, and '72 respectively. The rear of my lot was probably built over some swamp areas and sinks a little bit, as, as do some of the areas in that back there. Guessing they probably moved some of the homes more up from, away from that wet area, which kind of, not thinking about down the road, if you wanted to add garages, entryways, things like that, that there may be a problem. Even though these houses are lined forward on the lots, my house is still 36 and 1/2 feet from the curb edge of the street, and 26.5 feet, that's the distance from the end of the covered entry to the edge of the street. And that's what those pictures show, is there's actually another nine feet to the street there, and I have some more details here. The covered entry, that was addressed in number 1. Number 2, the covered entry over the existing porch provides protection from the elements to our porch and visitors. It also protects us from falling ice, rain, snow buildup that can be a hazard to people approaching the entryway of the house. The covered entry, as it is, adequately covers the front porch areas. Since living in Glendon, I've noticed that other residences have either arctic entryways or covered entries to their homes. These have, it looks like they're additions. I, I'm going to provide you a few pictures of those.
Thank you.
Okay. The covered entryway, although only 2.3 feet into a 20-foot setback, is covered, the, the covered entryway is actually 26 and 1/2 feet back from the physical edge of the street, and 36 feet, 5 inches, is the distance from the house to the street. The street itself is actually 33 feet wide. The asphalt is 29 feet wide with 2-foot gutters on each side of the curb. The street was completely rebuilt about 10 years ago with new wastewater lines and water, and water installed. The street is also a dead-end street on a cul-de-sac and has no through traffic. The information, that particular information, I don't think was provided by the planning staff analysis. Although we requested a covered entry to be built, the contractor was wrong in his assessment that the covered entry did not require a permit. I think we addressed that earlier, and if there had been a building permit, we'd known that, we wouldn't be here today. To remove or modify the structure would cost a lot, as it is tied into the house, and the vinyl siding has been put in around that attachment. Number 4, many of the houses in our neighborhoods have garages. When we bought this particular house, the carport, it is actually a carport that was enclosed. There is no entry into the house from the garage. All entry takes place through the front of the house. The covered entry makes us much safer. The structure itself does not impede in any way views, right-of-ways, and does not affect drainage runoff for neighbors or anything on that end. The energy upgrade itself has greatly enhanced appearance of the house, and I hope made the neighborhood a little better. We have had no complaints from adjacent neighbors, no registered complaints, and no code, code enforcement actions. In fact, we've had many compliments on the upgrade. Other homes in subdivision have also replaced siding and gone through upgrades with similar outside appearances to our homes. I included, as, as he indicated earlier, I included a petition from neighbors to support the variance. Number 5, approval of the variance will not change the character of the neighborhood nor the land is a nice family neighborhood. And number 6, as in standard 4, the approval of the variance would not change in any way health, safety, welfare, people of Anchorage, in no way alters these conditions. Number 7, the variance, if only 2.3 feet, if granted, will allow full function of the front deck area. In reviewing the comments that I looked at from various city departments, I must note there was no objections and comments to the variance request. I included a petition of immediate neighbors that supported the request. Also noted down at the municipality that there were two additional neighbors responded by mail in support of the variance. I hope I've addressed the standards for your satisfaction. My wife and I ask that you grant this variance. The home improvements have enhanced the house, and I believe the neighborhood. We have great neighbors and have always maintained our property so that it is not a distraction, encouraging you to want to live in our neighborhood. We're probably the only, we are probably in the only home we'll ever own and just want to enjoy their years there. We really enjoy our front deck, interacting with our neighbors, and enjoying the last evenings. I ask that you support this variance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Paulsen. Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Cars?
Yes, Mr. Paulsen, two questions. Is, is your house a, is it a split level?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. And second question, on, on page 30, you have a picture, I think a before-construction picture, and there's three moose in the picture. But I noticed in the after-construction pictures, there's no moose.
That's correct.
Do you still have moose?
I did, I, I didn't have any good pictures of the front like that. My neighbor provided that for me. She had taken the picture when the moose were there, so, but we, we have them there a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulsen, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
How, how does your backyard look this time of year, typically?
A lot of snow.
A lot of snow. During, during melt-off, does it retain water?
No, the lower end, if you, you can kind of see from that aerial photograph that there's a low area right by that back fence, and it's, it, until it completely dries out, it'll, it'll have a little water down in there in that area for about three or four or five houses each way in there. It's kind of a low area. I'm guessing they probably built a little bit forward through that whole area just because of that. Now, it's a nice-sized backyard, but it periodically sinks, and over, over years, I, I've put extra dirt back in there to fill that in, or the probably back third.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by the board? Any other questions by the board? Does staff have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Mr. Fink, does it again?
I'd like to sneak in at the last minute there, Mr. Ron. Mr. Paulson, I had one follow-up question if you wouldn't mind. I think maybe it was you that mentioned your house originally had a carport, but it's been converted to a garage?
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no access from that garage into your?
There's not. You have to come out the garage door, or a rear door goes out to the backyard, but there's no access. And it wasn't closed when we bought the house.
And so there was no opportunity for an entry?
No.
In the garage itself? That's your primary entrance?
That is correct. We have to go in the front.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fink? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you.
Open the?
I'm sorry, I'm not normally in uniform. I'm on alert out at, I'm in the air guard. I'm alert with rescue alert tonight, so I have somebody filling in with me, for me. So that, that's why I'm in uniform, just so you know.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Open up the hearing for public testimonies. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify tonight? Seeing no one? I'll assume there's no rebuttal to that effect? Okay. Mr. Paulson, any, any rebuttal?
I haven't.
Okay. It's indicated no. With that, the matter rests with the board. I'll ask for a positive motion from a board member, please. Mr. Cars, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. With respect to case 2011-040, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 2140040G1, minimum yard requirements to allow a covered porch to encroach 2.3 feet, 11.5 percent into the 20-foot front yard setback, subject to the three conditions on page seven of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Thank you, Mr. Fink, for having seconded. Is, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I intend to support this motion regarding standard one. I find that that standard is met. There exist, except, exceptional or existing physical circumstances of the subject property. The house was built in 1973. Looking at the aerial on page nine of the staff packet, it appears that this, this house more so than any of the others on that, the west side of Glendon Drive, was situated to the front of the lot more so than, than any of the, any of the adjacent lots. We've heard testimony from the petitioner that the, the back of the lot had, had a wet area. So this may have dictated the placement of, of the house with respect to, to the wet, wetter areas of the lot. The, as well, in 1973, the house could possibly have been placed in a location further back, but at the time, arctic entries, covered entries weren't more the, the norm or the recognized necessity of a, a winter city that we have now. So I, I think that with those situations in, in place, or those being the existing conditions, I find that that, that standard is met. And for those same reasons, find that standard number two is met. And staff had indicated as well, covered porches are a common right of environment, of enjoyment in this neighborhood. Staff counted several covered front porches on Glendon Circle. So I do believe that strict application of the code would create undue hardship on the property owner. Standard three, I, I do find that the standard is met. Again, at the time of the house placement, the need for covered entry was, was not recognized as more of a necessity than, than it is now. Standard, concur with staff that standards four, five, six, and seven are met or substantially met. And for those reasons, I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Mr. Fink, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. I, I think, I think Mr. Cars did a good job of summarizing standards one and two, and I, I do believe that that, looking at the aerial on page nine, it does, it does appear that, that house was placed further to the front of the lot than most of the other ones, and I suspect it probably did have something to do with the tendency of water to collect maybe in the backside of that lot. I think it is a bit, it is a physical circumstance that is exceptional. I, I think it is, therefore, that standard is met. Strict application of the code would, I believe, create an undue hardship. And I think, as Mr. Cars said, you know, arctic entries and front porches are almost a necessity now, and it's also, I think, a safety, safety thing. Standard number three, not, hardship's not self-imposed. I think the property owner, the applicant in this case, really had, had to work with what, what existing conditions were there when the house was sited where it was, attempting to provide some necessary protection from the elements and very little opportunity to, to do that without resulting in this encroachment, and it was an unintentional situation, as he mentioned. I agree with the staff findings on standards four, five, six, and seven. I don't, I don't see any impacts to adjacent properties or the people of the municipality in granting this variance, and so I'm going to support the motion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Would anyone else care to speak to the motion? I intend to support the motion as well for the reasons presented by Mr. Cars and, and Mr. Fink. Thank you, Mr. Paulson, for a well-organized presentation and for your testimony tonight. So I intend to support the motion as well. Seeing no other requests to comment, let's vote. The motion before us passes unanimously, unanimously, seven yea votes and zero nay. Must read for the record. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. That concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Moving on to agenda item I, reports. I have nothing to report. Jill, have anything to report? Committees? I think we have any, but anyone wanting to start a committee? overthrow the chair? Okay. Mr. McGoughlin, anything to report?
No, thank you.
Board member comments? I'll start off. I won't be here next month. So, Mr. Cars, as I mentioned earlier, yours next month. Hopefully, you'll, you'll be here, otherwise, Mr. Fink is on.
What leave policy do we have for that chair?
I'll be out of state for, for a work conference. Any else?
What is the date?
Is it the 14th? No, that's not right. 12th? 13th? Let me just throw out numbers there, Mr. Fink. The 12th?
May 12.
Thursday, May 12.
Thank you.
Mr. Fink?
Do we know the case load for next month? And you?
I, I don't recall.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. With that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting.